I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So the first. Yeah. The first item on our agenda is the PTO update. Do we have? Ah, wonderful. Welcome. And would you mind just, since we don't have a recorder today, we're going to be taking minutes off of the video. So if anyone's giving, coming up to the mic, if you could just say your name, that would be helpful. Thank you.
I'm Amy Krieger. I'm the treasurer of the PTO. Thirty was the president she was meeting tonight, so she asked me to come. So just a few updates. We recently had our first trunk or treat event. It was great success. We had eighteen cars decorate their trunks, including a few businesses who joined. It was actually a kindergarten parent who brought the idea. It was pretty last minute, but together we've been noticing a lot of involvement from the incoming kindergarten parents, which is great. It will also be helpful when some of the PTO board ages out. So that's been great to see and just bringing the community together and seeing all the families. I think we got a lot of good feedback from it as well. It was a great community. That our next meeting is Thursday at 6:00 PM in the Main Street Library. We'll have Jackie Carlosi and Sheena Heaney talking about steam programming at the schools, as well as Arlene Paletta, and she's talking about inclusive approaches to how schools celebrate holidays. So it should be interesting. And we're looking to redesign the PTO logo for this year. Put that out to some students, have them history, see what we get back, or maybe reaching out to some other students or school programs that might be interested in working on that. Our first glow party committee meeting will be on Monday, November seventeenth, at 7:30 on Zoom, and the date that they best will be Friday, February sixth.
Does anyone have any questions?
Sounds good.
Thank you so much. Great. So our next agenda item, we're actually going to move to the end of the meeting, which is our non-public session. So we will open up public comment right now at 6:02. I don't believe we have anyone here from the public, but if someone should join us, we can stop and take a public comment. Next on our agenda is the approval of the meeting minutes from our September ninth meeting. This is our public meeting minutes. Just give everyone a chance to kind of look back over those. Oh, where do I have the? Do I have the wrong? You're right. Sorry, I'm looking at the wrong. So the October meeting minutes. Forgive me, I was looking at the wrong document. I'm going to just look at this one, so I don't have to. Any discussion? Would someone like to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes from October fourteenth and the non-public meeting minutes from October fourteenth?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, regular and non-public.
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. Wonderful. So we'll move on to our central office update, starting with the superintendent's office update.
Thank you. And most of this will actually be the finance office. We've spent quite a bit of time this past month working with building administration on the budget, so we look forward to that first view tonight with you. I also, at Joint Board, had mentioned that we would provide an update around open enrollment at November meetings. We don't have an update. We're still really waiting to learn more and get more guidance. And so just know that we are involved in those conversations statewide and we'll provide information as we receive it. And then the only other thing I wanted to highlight was I know there had been some conversation about the reunification plan and making sure that it was clear to parents where they could find that. So that is on the website. We've talked about maybe pushing that out through some school communication as well in the near future. So you can find it on the website, but we can certainly highlight that in school communications soon.
Great. That's great. Any questions? All right. Moving along to our finance office. Lots to discuss. Good evening. Is it on?
I don't know if that's on, actually, now I'm thinking about it. Is it green?
Green light? Better? Perfect. That's better.
Do a redo. Good evening. Michelle Larson from Central Office. So in your board packs, we gave you your financial position at the end of the month. So last month you had $634,617 in remaining expense. We spent an additional $42,383 in various services and supplies. So right now we have remaining expense or unencumbered expense of $592,235,000. So also on this page that we sent to you, it gives you the values for your trust funds. We also send you the information on your grants that the Exeter School District has. Does anyone have any questions on those items? Okay. So also in your board pack, you were sent a copy of the fiscal '27 proposed budget. Since that time, there are few changes have been made. So I put the new copy on right in front of everyone. So I'm going to invite the principals to come up and present their budgets. And then if there are any questions that I need to handle, just let me know and I'll pop in.
All right. Good evening, everybody. My name is Ryan McCloskey, the Lincoln Street School principal. Like we've done in past years, we're going to do kind of like a little budget at a glance, kind of focusing on the major drivers of the budget for the proposed '26, '27. So we'll take some turns kind of speaking to the different parts of the budget that we felt like we wanted to highlight. The first part that you see, I believe, on the copy that you have in front of you refers to the health insurance GMR. And just, that is one of the major drivers for the increases that we saw. And just for explanation, the health insurance rate increased anywhere from about 14.8% to 17%, which is, or $597,058. And this range exists because we offer various plans in the district and the rate increase varies depending on the plan that members of the collective bargaining agreement sort of chosen. The next piece that I wanted to just highlight is around salary and personnel. The salary increases are in line with our collective bargaining agreements for the Exeter School District. As noted below in the special education section, we have been able to reduce contracted personnel and have been able to hire more of our own staff. I know that was a fairly significant talking point from last year around this time. So Diana will be able to speak in a little bit more detail to that, but we are excited about kind of the shift that we've been able to see. And certainly the negotiations went a long way to putting together CPA for our support staff that they're feeling very good about. Our preschool aid salary increase due to removing those staff from the Main Street School aid salary line with a resulting decrease in the MSS aid salary line and increase of one at the EDP. So it's just a shift from Main Street to Lincoln Street. Both buildings have a number of staff completing, we have some cohorts completing some graduate programs. So a number of track changes are anticipated in the salary lines. Special education administration assistant had an increase of days and an increase of salary. And then also for special education, the Lincoln Street School occupational therapist, or OT, is moving to a full-time position. So that was another piece that drove up the salary line a little bit.
Can I ask you a question about that, Ryan? Occupational therapist, is that part of the teacher contract or is that separate from that? It's separate?
Is OT covered in the CBA?
Well, it's kind of a one of one. They're not really covered by the CBA, although they may be looking to do that. It's not really part of that. Same for our PTs. They're not neatly in that collective bargaining agreement.
So just to clarify on that, those positions will be, were part of the negotiation to be added to the CBA? So the increases that you're seeing in those lines in this budget were due to this year's salaries for those people being underbudgeted. So that's why you see an increase there. But their actual increases are part of the negotiation for the Exeter teachers' CBA.
But that's not passed yet, so that...
Correct. Correct.
I think I understand that. Currently, it's a position that's not currently under the collective bargaining agreement, but it's proposed that it would be in the future. And if it is, then it would be under that. If that separate Warren article passed, in the future it would go under that.
I do also just want to say congratulations on reducing your contracted services. It's a hard thing to do, so I'm glad that the plan paid off. So thank you for that.
Beth Ketterett, the principal at Main Street School. So the next area that we want to highlight is there was a slight increase in leadership stipends for Main Street School and Lincoln Street School. This refers to the stipend that staff receive for serving on our building learning teams at each school. These teams meet twice a month and with a focus on teaching and learning. And the stipend in previous years was funded through grant, but it's moved to the operating budget. And the increase reflects the number of staff on each building's team. Another area we wanted to highlight was under multilingual learner contracted services. We reduced this .2 position for the '26, '27 school year based on current levels of student need. This position this year is currently contracted position. Next area is professional development slash course reimbursement. We, both of our buildings have a $35,000 dedicated chunk of money for professional development. This includes anything from conferences, professional reading, or to bring in a speaker or consultant. And this line in this, our budget was significantly overdrawn because it was taken from a different line in the past. So the actual expenditures from the '24, '25 school year for professional development reflected the proposed numbers. So a little bit of shifting on where that money is coming out of. The next area is the field trip line. Both of our schools added a field trip line for $6,000 per school due to an increase in transportation costs. Currently, $10,000 was approved through the Wheelwright Funds for field trips between both schools for this current year. And then the next area is the kindergarten bond for Main Street School. So the '26, '27 school year will be the final year of the kindergarten bond, which is the eight additional classrooms that were added to Main Street in order to support the full-day program for kindergarten. And this will result in a decrease of approximately $488,483 that we planned for the '27, '28 school year.
All right. The next thing that I have on my list is our technology service contracts. When you look at the quick snapshot of major changes, it looks like there's a $35,000 reduction to that line. One of the things that we removed from that line and moved to an admin maintenance contract line was our Canon copiers and the cost for the copiers in both buildings. So there is an overall decrease, but the decrease is probably closer to a net of around $6,000 versus when you look at that line initially, it looks like it's 35. But about 28 of that just got moved to a different line. But that refers specifically to the Canon copiers that get used through both buildings. In core subject area supplies, you'll see that they're pretty stable. You might see some slight increases just because of the frozen budget that we had for a chunk of last year, so they don't necessarily accurately reflect what some of the needs were just because we had about a four-month period where those lines were frozen. But in general, the costs are in line with what we've had for previous years. Then the last piece that I have is guidance service supplies. It's not a significant increase, but there is about $2,000 per school for the addition of the Purposeful People Program, which is a program that through grant funds, we are piloting this year. We have a pilot group in this building. We have a pilot group at Main Street School as well. And the renewal cost for that program, which really focuses more on character growth and belonging, taught in unison with classroom teachers and the school counselor, is about $2,000 per school. So it's not a huge bump, but it is something new that you would not have seen in last year's budget. Thank you.
Hi. That brings us to contracted services, where I'm very happy to report we've got a reduction over Main Street School and Lincoln Street School for a combined amount of $224,000. Part of this is due to some reduced needs. We've also placed a couple of kids out of district that we had not anticipated doing. We were able to reduce it by half the contracted service providers that we had with us, so we're really happy about that. We're also able to hire some of our contracted services people and bring them in as employees. So I think the passage of the paraeducator contract has been really helpful. We still have people coming in and applying, and we're interviewing them as the year goes along. And if we are able to replace contracted providers, then we do so. So we'll continue that effort. Special education tuition, we will have four students placed out of districts next school year. That's a higher number for us, so you will see an increase in those lines. That goes along with the increase in transportation, going to a further distance. So we do see also simply that transportation just tends to be more expensive each year, and that's kind of consistent as we're seeing. Summer programming. So Title I covers the Exeter Summer Skills Academy that Diana runs over the course of the summer. There's no additional funds there in terms of the lines, just some things were cleaned up for transparency to make sure to denote what was summer programming materials and what was summer programming salaries. There is an increase to the special education line for Lincoln Street School. That is our new BCBA that we, our board-certified behavioral analyst, that we were able to hire rather than contract for. So she's here with us in the summer to work on summer programming.
Any questions? Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Well, you said something about $224,000, but there's a number, it says $424,000 in the budget, just to clarify that, which, I'm just confused which one it was.
So there, so it's a reduction, are you talking about on the front page?
Yeah, the front page, it says specialty contracted services. It looks like a reduction of $424,000.
Yes.
I thought when you spoke, you said it was $224,000.
My apologies. No. $424,000.
Just to clarify, when you were saying that, I think it was the $352,000 for special ed tuition, is that the number that corresponded with the four students placed out of district?
Yes. That's the resulting increase as a result of this, four, having a total of four.
Out of district.
Correct.
And can you just remind me, sort of what often drives, sort of, I do know, because I feel really proud of our special ed, you know, services here, why people might come to our district, you know? But can you just clarify, you know, sort of what, generally speaking, drives those decisions?
Sure. We are able to program for most students here, and we do, our staff is just fantastic. I just, I can't say enough good things about them. But we do have students, when we get to the point where we might have two paraeducators working with one student. And we've got a lot of related services. And perhaps the behaviors are such that they're a disruption to the kind of regular function of the school, we will begin to consider that this might not be the right place for the student. And we have a lot of conversations with the family and a lot of conversations with staff about what might be the right next step. And typically, it's looking at a specialized private program that can address those needs.
Thanks. That's really helpful. Appreciate that.
And the money that we, like, vote in, maybe I'm confused, into like a fund, just for, but that's for like unanticipated out-of-network placements. Okay.
Thank you. Okay.
I have three questions. One is, do we know what the default budget would be? Okay. Because that's helpful to get a sense of that. So that's one question I had. Second question was, are we able to calculate what this budget would be without federal funds? In other words, how much of this is federal funds? Do we have a million dollars in federal funds, $500,000 in federal funds, $3 million? At one point in the spring, we had asked if we could get that information. So you might not be prepared tonight to give it to us, but I think that would be helpful for the December meeting, to be able to understand that if the federal government were to cut off our funding, what kind of impact that would have on us? And whether or not we want to prepare for that and put that before the voters, a budget without federal funds or not. I think we want to have that discussion, but we need a sense to know what those numbers would look like.
Do you feel basically for the allocation of federal funding that Exeter is receiving for this year?
Any federal funding, anything that have a federal tie to it, whether it's free and reduced lunch, whether it's grant money, anything that the federal government could cut off funding for. You know, and I mean, be creative, because they will be. Yeah, any possible thing that they could cut off. If they cut off every single thing, what would that be? What would the dollar amount be? And the third thing was just a general comment is, I remember having this discussion last year and when we passed the budget, because there was a, there was a push to really try to do more with hiring staff, you know, in-house, so that we, you know, we would have more certified people, we wouldn't have to have contracted services. But we also budgeted for contracted services at the same time. And I remember, at least I made a comment, that we needed to be careful, that we didn't then just kind of absorb that contracted services number. So I, you know, I see this $400,000, $424,000, which is positive. It means that sort of the plan is working. But, you know, I also get concerned that if you built that $400,000, if we weren't counting on that $400,000 savings, that would mean that we're looking at a six, seven, you know, percent budget increase. And, you know, I think ideally, we were hoping not to do that from year to year. I know budgets only made one year at a time, so it's easy to lose track of them. But at least I remember that discussion, that we were sort of double budgeting. We were budgeting to hire more staff, but also budgeting for contracted services in case we needed that. And, I don't know, it just concerns me a little bit that, you know, that offset is in there, but the numbers are still pretty high. And I know that I'm looking at this, it seems like there's some really big drivers for that, because there's special ed tuition, between special ed tuition and health, it's almost a million dollars right there. So, you know, so I appreciate that part of it, that it's significant, but, and I don't know. It's just, it's just, you know, I just want to be careful in terms of, I think we always want to be careful in terms of what kind of burden we're putting on the Exeter voters. And then particularly when we start to weigh this in with looking at numbers for that if we were to lose federal funding, because it's happened, at least to some other institutions of learning, you know, that just to be prepared for that and what kind of impact it would have on the voters. So more, I'm, more, you don't, no one has to answer anything right now. I think it's just some thoughts that I had about some of those different pieces that I think it would be good for us to continue to wrestle with before we make a final decision.
I appreciate you bringing that back up, because I remember us talking about that and it was a big part of, you know, what we put forward after the negotiations. And I remember us making a footnote to remember, so thank you for remembering. And I guess then is the question whether, you know, what we're seeing in terms of more paras coming on and that we would see a future where you, we could, the baseline for that contracted services would come down? Is that what you're?
Well, I think it has, but I think in some ways we built in like a $600,000 buffer in some ways. We didn't think we're going to have to use all $600,000, and it's great to see that we, or I don't remember what the exact number was. Maybe it wasn't $600,000. But maybe we used $200,000 in contracted services, not looking at the number right now. But, you know, and I think the goal is to reduce it. But in some ways, we had an extra $400,000 budgeted that we didn't expect to need, just in case. We, you know, as, I think our superintendent advised us at the time, we really needed to do both.
In case it doesn't work. Yeah, because the plan didn't work.
We kind of over-budgeted in the short term, just in case. But I think the thought was that we didn't want to lock that in, is that, you know, now we have an extra $400,000 just to spend in some other way.
That's right.
And so, I mean, I don't mean this in a critical way. I just, I don't know, I just want to be careful, because I think if you, if we didn't, since we weren't planning to use that $400,000 offset, if you built that into what we're talking about, it's a little bit less than a 5% increase, another $400,000, I think it's another percentage and a half or whatever. Probably we'd take it up over 6%. So which is, will be a pretty high number for us. I mean, even foreign, you know, almost 5% is high. And I understand, again, a lot that's driven by health, which we don't have a lot of control over, really don't have any control over, really. So it's, I mean, half of that number, $600,000 of that, of that 1.2 million is health and dental. So.
I think it's a good question to sort of take a look back at that contracted services line and reevaluate it based on, and I do remember us talking quite a bit about that and keeping it there as a safeguard in case the plan didn't work, but going forward to reassess if we think we'll be in a better situation looking forward. I appreciate that you brought that back up.
I know this is just the first look, so it's more thoughts and questions. I mean, technically with that, if the teacher contract passed, in some ways, that number for the one or two positions that might get absorbed into it are being counted twice, right? Because they're being counted in the teacher contract, and then they're also being counted in here, in case the teacher contract doesn't pass. Is that right?
So because we were aware of that, what we did was, we built it in here in case the teacher contract did not pass. And we took the additional increase that we included in this budget, and we decreased the numbers in the negotiation for their increase in that CBA negotiation. So we took it into effect so that we were not double-counting it.
Got you.
Does anyone else have any questions or thoughts at this time? Okay. I think to Patrick's point, this is a first look. I appreciate, I mean, I agree. There's a lot of unmovable numbers in here in terms of the health and dental being nearly $600,000 worth of the increase, which is of course being felt by communities across the country. And so we're not alone in that. Next steps, we will come back and revisit this at our next meeting. Thank you guys for your thoughtfulness in preparing this for us today.
Do you know, I'm sorry, just to follow up on that one part with the default budget, do we have a sense of what the timing is when you would know how to calculate the default budget? I mean, I don't remember when that happens, what time of year that comes out.
So if you'd like to get a feel for it, what we can do is we can give a stab at it. I'm sure that we'll probably be meeting as changes come about. I mean, as we get closer through December and find out some other information as it comes through. We'll take a stab at it before we come back to you in December. And it won't be perfect, but it'll give you an idea. In case further things change, then obviously the default will change with that. But it would give you a sense of where your default would be.
I think that'd be helpful, even if it's not the final number that would go on the Warren article, just. would go on the Warren article, just to have a sense of how the proposed budget will compare to that.
You can do that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you so much. Let's move on to our principal reports. Who would like to start?
All right, I get to go first. Beth Kaderet again, the principal at Main Street and the EDP. So a few highlights for this month. The Exeter School District just finished the process of creating a new vision statement. Staff from all the three schools worked together to make this happen. We started at our buildings where we collected some information from our staff and some ideas for what our future could look like and what we want it to look like. Next, we brought that information to our learning teams, and then our learning teams used the feedback to write some different possible statements. And then we pushed out three statements to all of our staff where they were able to vote on their top choice for our vision statement. So our official Exeter School District vision statement is, "The Exeter School District Aspires to be a Thriving Community Built on Collaboration and Inclusion. Together, we pledge to celebrate the joy of learning, nurture curiosity, and share responsibility for growth and success." Our next step in this process is to, to have some conversations around our values and our collective agreements, and that we will do in the next month or two jointly between our two learning teams. Couple of things to highlight as far as some enrichment experiences for our students at Main Street. We just did welcome Tiger to Main Street. A couple of weeks ago, we had two holes, or two assemblies where they performed their program called COMQUEST. Tiger comes from Plymouth State University. It stands for Theater Integrating Guidance, Education, and Responsibility. Focus of the show is to share and empower students to use healthy strategies to handle stress, worry, and fear using the power of live theater. Our students at Main Street really enjoy the show from Tiger. It's very engaging, and the students walk away. It's really interesting to hear the feedback from the kids, and they just talk about it like for days, which is really nice. In kindergarten, our students were visited by the Exeter Fire Department as part of Fire Prevention Week. That always happens right around the second week of October. And the students learned about the role in the community, the tools they use to keep everyone safe, and then they got to do a little bit of a touch-a-chuck and explore some of the emergency vehicles. Our first grade students participated in an enrichment program called Wildlife Encounters. They bring in a number of different animals, they talk about these animals with the students, talk about the habitats, and this directly connects to the first grade studies on animal adaptations. And then for grade two, our students took a community field trip to the Exeter Fire Department. It's part of the Fire Prevention Week. They do a little bit of different learning than the kindergarten students. They actually get to visit the fire station, look at some of the equipment, and learn about, more about the daily operations of the fire department, what it looks like in real person. Our fall session of after-school enrichments is wrapping up tomorrow. So we actually, we had a huge number of students, which was great for our fall session. There was over 100 students who participated. Some of the sessions that were offered, rocking, rock climbing, kickball, karate, robotics, arts and crafts, yoga, coloring, dance, nature time, and Legos. So that was exciting. And today, we held our student-led conferences across the district. We had so many caregivers and families and students in our buildings. It's really neat to see the kids so excited to share their learning and their, their school experiences with their caregivers. And they, they just do a really nice job sharing their learning with their families. We recently enjoyed, last week, a spirit week. And so students and staff had the opportunity to participate in weekly theme days. And we also, we had a staff activity where staff, groups of, of staff got together, decorated pumpkins, and our students got to see sort of them all created, which was kind of neat. They always love to do that. And then we ended the week by our students wearing costumes or school colors to celebrate. We are bringing back Breakfast Buddies Program. So we partner with Seacoast School of Technology, and either their early childhood students or marketing students participate in this program. Small groups of students come in during our breakfast, sit with our students, provide some companionship, just have some conversations. And then the SST students go back to their programming. But it's a really nice opportunity to connect our youngest students with some of our oldest students. And it's nice to see some of our former Main Street students come back as older students, which was great. And then one last highlight, Subaru of Exeter reached out to us in the spring. They, this is the second time that they have partnered with us around their Subaru Loves Learning Program, where six educators, educators were randomly selected and were provided with funds for supplies and materials for teaching and learning. So about a month ago, we had an assembly where Subaru came in and presented us a check for $30,000. And also, they give their community and, and their employees an opportunity to write notes to our teachers, which is really, really nice to see. And we just want to thank Subaru for that partnership and that opportunity for supporting our school and our teachers. Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. A lot of things that Ms. Kaderet said will be echoed or can be echoed at Lincoln Street School, also Ryan McCloskey, Lincoln Street School. Our third graders just wanted to highlight, they do a walking field trip, and they've done it for a number of falls now, where they go to the community fridge outside of the YMCA. The purpose of the experience is to provide a connection between our school agreements and what roles different community members have. We're learning to be empathetic within our community, and donating and delivering food is a way to help our third graders understand the positive impact they can have within the community. Those have been very well received, both from the YMCA and certainly, you know, we may have a group go on Monday and fill that fridge up, another group goes on Wednesday, and the, the need is there. So it's, it's nice to see them do that. I'm going to go quickly through, we've had a number of field trips. Third grade went to Cedar Hill Farm back in mid-October. Our fourth grade students went to Great Bay Estuary. And our fifth grade students had an in-house experience where they had the Center for Wildlife bring in Birds of Prey. Those are all trips that we've done for a number of falls now, but they are new to the, you know, students that are here this fall and are always well received, so we're, we're excited for those. I also just wanted to shout out our third graders who did their annual tradition of the cornfield characters last Friday, which was well received. It was a new challenge with the windy conditions. There were not many vertical by the end of the day, but the ones that did, you know, kudos to, to a strong foundation.
I'll say Diamond York's head fell off.
Yes.
She fell over and her head fell off.
You know, it actually, it was, it was fitting for the day, though. I mean, so, but anyway, third graders did a great job, and certainly through the morning, it was a pretty good show. A lot of our Main Street students came up and got to see them while they were still in decent shape. But by the, I will tell you, by dismissal, it was, looked a little rough outside. We've had a number of enrichment experiences. Beth already spoke about the Tiger program, but our third and fourth graders also were able to participate in the Tiger program as well. For extracurricular activities, the Lincoln Street School cross-country season came to an end a few weeks ago. In total, we had 53 fourth and fifth grade students participate this fall, which was, it's, it's always a great program. The coaches do a wonderful job, and they finish their season out at Stratum Hill Park in what they call an all-comers meet. And we have students from each of the SAU 16 elementaries compete at that, that particular race. And it's just, it's, it's a really cool, the, the focus being on sportsmanship and trying your best and just improving for yourself. It, it's really an age-appropriate, they do a really great job with it. Students are completing the first session of after-school enrichment. We had over 100 students participate. So again, you know, we think about these different clubs and activities and different opportunities for kids to build their sense of belonging within the school. There's a lot of opportunities for kids at both Main Street and Lincoln Street School. So again, students were able to choose from anything from indoor/outdoor hockey, to rock painting, to fuse beads, to board games, to take apart clubs. So lots of opportunities for lots of different interests. The last thing I'll just mention fairly quickly is on October 10th, which is a little while ago, but we haven't discussed it since our, no, we did, October 14th. I'm going to take that one off. I'm so sorry. And then again, I'm just, I put a little save the date at the very bottom of my update, but just, we have our first gateway presentation for fifth grade students, which is more of an SAU-wide initiative at grades five, eight, and 12. And so ours is February 12th of this coming school, or this school year. And so we're excited for that, to invite our caregivers and families, but certainly all of you as well. We're really excited to host that event for the first time. So thank you.
I just had a quick question for both of you. It's impressive, the amount of enrichment activities that we're able to offer students. And I was just curious how those are determined, like, is it based on sort of teachers that have an interest in sort of sharing a skill or an interest? Or do we hear from students about what they're interested in? It just seems like a really, like, rich variety of, of offerings, and I was just curious how, how that comes to be.
I would say it could be a little bit of both for the after-school enrichment. Sometimes we do have a student or a group of students come forward and say, I really want to do this. We have to see if it's viable, if we have a teacher that was willing to sponsor it, if we, what kind of supplies or materials might be needed, whether that's kind of fits within the umbrella of an after-school enrichment. But we do certainly take student input, but we also look at, you know, oh, we have take apart club, take apart club always fills out like within the first two days. So we know that's one that we can kind of continue to move through. So kind of look at it from both, both lenses, I would say. And another piece I'll just throw out, I meant to throw it out, and then I stumbled myself over with that October 10th piece. But Drama Club, fifth grade Drama Club is going to be presenting Kids Aladdin, December 19th and 20th, I believe. So that's yet another opportunity for students to find an interest, find a connection to the school. And we're, we're excited to see the production.
With our new sound system.
With the new sound system that we're actually going to have on this time. So really excited, yeah.
Work night two and three.
That's great. Thank you both. Any questions? All right. So let's move forward into our board committee reports. And starting with our equity committee with Tim and Kate.
It's November 12th.
Yes, so our 13th. So yeah, I think the next meeting is Thursday, November, because it meets the second Thursday of every month, so it'll be Thursday, November 13th. And then, yeah, so that'll be the next meeting.
So we haven't had a meeting since we were here last.
Okay, great. We, let's go ahead and look at the policies, since there weren't very many. And I can go through those quickly. Actually, do you have them in front of you? I guess my computer is acting up. Yes, I have this. So I'll just, there, as you probably may have noticed when you were reviewing these, these look familiar, and that's because some of them we actually reviewed, I think, in the spring. And that is in part because the central office, Allison can speak more to this, is really just trying to get some of these policies we have to review on a regular basis. So we're just trying to get them onto a cycle. So some of these look, will probably look very familiar to you, and you'll note in the, what, what we shared with you, that, you know, some of them, the committee didn't really have much to recommend outside of any changes that were suggested by changes to the law primarily. So I'll just name the committees, and then we can kind of open it up for some discussion overall. So we reviewed Policy Code AC, which was the Non-Discrimination Equal Opportunity Employment and District Anti-Discrimination Plan. And namely, you'll note that in that particular policy, there were just some revisions to expand sections, which were required by law for us to include. So that is, that is that policy. Policy Code ACA, which is policy name Discrimination and Harassment Grievance Procedure, is just a policy, again, that we're trying to get onto cycle to review. So that one probably looks more familiar to you. The tobacco products ban, this one was a, this is Policy Code ADC. This was a revision, and the revision was the inclusion of the one line to include reference to e-cigarettes, e-liquid for any person under 21. So that was the change there. And then the next two policies, Policy Code GBAM, which is Accommodation of Pregnancy and Related Medical Conditions for Employees. Again, this had some minor revisions to comply with Title IX regulations, but this was a policy we had recently reviewed as a board. Policy Code IHBCA, which is the Accommodation of Pregnancy and Related Medical Conditions for Students. Again, this is a revision, and we just updated some legal references, but this is again to get back on cycle. And then the last policy was Policy Code IMDA, which was the Pledge of Allegiance. This one we reviewed in March. So again, this is another one that we're just trying to get back, get into a regular schedule of review. So I'll pause there and just see if there were any questions or comments on any of those as you took a look.
So I guess I don't understand why we would review or pass IHBCA. I mean, it's even listed on here as Exeter Regional Cooperative School Board. I think that's more of a co-op policy. We don't need.
Yes, you're right. That is a good catch. We don't, that's right. We don't need to.
Elementary level.
Yep.
I mean, technically, I guess it's possible, but.
We discussed it at the policy committee, but you're correct. That one doesn't need to be voted on.
Is it the same for IHBCA, too?
Well, that's for personnel.
Yeah, it's for employees.
For personnel, for employees, it would still apply, but not for students.
Okay.
I mean, I think there's a couple of, a couple of these policies don't list Exeter in the title, but that, you know, would be changed later, I assume.
Yep.
Just to have, the change hadn't been made before we got it. But otherwise, I don't have any questions.
Any questions from anyone else? All right. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve all the policies with the exception of the Exeter Co-op School District policy.
Yeah, can I, go ahead, go ahead.
That's it, I'm done.
We want, okay. Do you want to?
I'll have someone else second it.
Does someone, would someone like to second the motion?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
Yes, part of the discussion, I mean, again, I think the one thing to clean up, though, is that if you look at AC, it's listed as an Exeter Regional Cooperative School Board policy, just in terms of what's listed in here. I think it's the same policy, that would just have to be changed as Exeter School Board. I think that's the intention, that it's not any different. And so I think for clarification sakes, for Beth, since she just referenced the Exeter School Board policy, I think you mean the one that was on Pregnancy for Students.
The Exeter Co-op School Board.
Right, but there's, but, but actually, two or three of these say Exeter Co-op School Board in our packet.
Oh.
I think that's.
So it doesn't, it's just that those will be cleaned up later, but it's not.
Okay. With the exception of the Pregnancy policy.
For students.
For students.
Right, yeah.
Okay, do we need to make another?
I think she's just clarifying her motion.
Okay, great.
Just to clarify, to clarify her motion. Right, you're still, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Are you still seconding that, right, Tim?
Yes, I still.
Okay. Great. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we did it. Great. So the next committee is safe. So the next committee is Safety and Security. We have not met since our last school board meeting and I believe we don't meet again until, I believe it might be January. Correct?
I have to.
Yeah, we will have, we will report back. Yeah, I believe it's, so we haven't met since our last meeting. Beth, our strategic planning committee, update.
We have not met since we last met here as a school board. I believe Dr. Andruski was presenting the strategic plan or getting feedback from administrators in our next meeting is scheduled for December 3rd, I believe. Yes. 12:03.
Great. Facilities, Beth and Patrick?
Following the theme, we have not met. But this is a little different. This group only meets on a kind of a needed basis if there's an issue that comes up. And so we don't have a planned meeting and there's nothing that's come up in the past month that would have a need for me.
Okay. And the Wheelwright Trust, Tim and Kate?
We have not met because we haven't had any submissions due to the freeze of the funds there. It would be great to have maybe an update on, the, the update, no, just the update on the projects that we had approved.
Well, happy to say that the marquees are installed and I think we're really, really close to getting the electric completed and hooked up to both marquees. And so I would anticipate within the next couple of weeks that we would get some training and start pushing out some notices and some highlights on our marquees. So that's exciting.
The only other one would be transportation field trip.
And the, and the stencils were, were done?
Do we pay? Stencils.
The stencils have been a longstanding story here. We are, we are about 90% done with those. And I will just say that we contracted with a gentleman who is wonderful. When we got those stencils out, never having worked with stencils before, they are balled up about as tight as you can be. And we tried it one time and they would just, we needed to flatten them out for a little bit. So we were here on Saturday, we got the majority of them down. The only ones we did not get down are the ones that needed multiple colors. So we're probably going to handle that in-house just because he didn't have that on hand. But we'll be able to get those two pieces, two different activities down. But the 3rd graders on Monday, we're very excited about the new stencils. We're going to take some short videos of the kids demonstrating the appropriate way to use the different like motion or activity stations. And we're going to put them on the TV out by the front office where we may bring it down and project it during lunch for a few days that kids can see how it's used. So we are almost there, but I will not be putting in a request for stencils anytime soon.
For those who might be listening who weren't at the meeting where we discussed this project, could you just summarize sort of what the?
Sure, the overarching.
Yeah, just.
The why behind it, sure. So there were two, really. I mean, one, our hot top that we have out back for Lincoln Street School, a lot of the activities that were out there, whether it be hopscotch or four square or even the basketball court, were pretty well faded. They were hard to see and not particularly easy to use for students at that point. Additionally, in our morning, students have their lunch recess in the middle of the day, but we also have what we refer to as a regulation break or a movement break. And 3rd and 4th grade takes advantage of about a 10-minute opportunity to go outside. The idea, though, isn't to participate in highly competitive activities like Gaga Ball or football, which tend to do the opposite of regulating. And then we come in and we spend additional time trying to get kids regulated. So the activities that we have outside are more towards, lean more towards just promoting silly movements, different opportunities to engage in like jumping jacks or to do like a, you know, follow a snake kind of like, or tightrope walk or elephant walk or all different types of things that are age appropriate, certainly get the energy out for a little bit, but also are going to be easy to transition back into a learning environment. So that was the larger goal of it.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything else on that, Tim and Kate?
No, and just to clarify, when I said freeze, I didn't mean that the funds were frozen. I meant that we anticipate the fund to be depleted by the end of the year when the field trip costs have been taken from the account.
Great. We haven't met for sabbatical, although I will say that at our December meeting, we will have a presentation from Ms. Papino on her sabbatical and there'll be something in your packet to review in advance of that. So she'll be sharing out what she learned and sort of how she's applying it in her classroom and sharing with the school as well. So looking forward to that. Negotiations, Kate and Patrick, anything on negotiations?
We have met many times.
We have met many times.
And, you know, we're finished with our meetings and we have a sort of a tentative agreement, but the plan is that at the December meeting, we'll bring the proposed agreement to the board and discuss it there and ask the board to take a vote to approve it.
Okay. Thank you guys for doing that work. So our next agenda item is new business and we do have a piece of new business and I'll, I think, Patrick, you wanted to bring up something.
Yes, I have new business to bring up. So I don't have a fully formulated thought on this, but just something that I wanted to discuss with the board and then also, you know, open it up for input on others on how we might try to address this if we want to as a board. But I'm just concerned with the shutdown of the federal government, particularly with the change at the beginning of this month with benefits to families that are, you know, sort of on the edge financially, that it could end up impacting our students and, you know, impacting families in our community. And, you know, it's not the school's role to take care of the whole community, but we were just, I was impressed as we were talking earlier about, you know, trips to the community fridge. I know we've done things with the food pantry nearby us as well. And then we've also had things in terms of, we do have a free and reduced lunch program or we've looked to support families and we've worked with other groups like End 68 Hours of Hunger. And it just makes me wonder what sort of resources we have that we might be able to partner with, what kind of access we have to families, whether or not we've identified families that might be vulnerable and we might be able to have some outreach. You know, we're not right outside of Washington DC where we have a majority of our families that are employed by the federal government, but I'm also mindful that there also may be some families that might not otherwise be vulnerable, that might be during this period of time because of the shutdown and they might not be getting paid in the short term. So I know there's some groups like federal courthouses that are setting up community fridges in their own courthouse because only the judge is being paid and all their staff isn't, but they have to show up to work. So I don't have an answer on how to respond to this exactly, but I'm just concerned about it. I don't know if there are things that we can do as a board or as a school district to try to be helpful, you know? And again, I think the easiest thing for me to conceptualize is around the area of food security and if there are things that we can do to encourage or to waive costs and even if we, if the board needs to authorize some additional monies so that there's not any concern about waiving fees for people or if there are things that we can do to provide food over the weekends or, or something else. I just am, I'm trying to raise the topic and see if folks have ideas about something we might be able to do if people think it's a good idea to do something.
I'm really glad you brought this up because I also wanted to talk about the same thing. And maybe even another question is, you know, what would we anticipate maybe from seeing maybe more folks, you know, signing up for free and reduced lunch and like, is there wait time? Like, is that a long process? Is that a short process? Understanding that needs could be quite immediate for some folks. So I too don't know if I have any solutions, but I think it's good to talk about what might be our concerns.
I'm curious if you all have partnerships that, I'm just thinking about partnerships that have been beneficial in the past or that you have currently that could be expanded or just.
I can speak. So we've been working and talking a lot about some of the things that we could potentially do to help and we have a pretty good feeling for what are, some of our families' needs are. And so one of the ideas that we've been talking about is looking at where there's, we have school breaks or vacations and like, maybe it's collaborating with some area agencies to see, can we, can we put together a meal for, you know, families during that time when we're not in session to help in that way? So we've been actually talking this week about how we can do that. And we do partner with some really great community resources that we can partner with and help support that kind of a program. So we've, we've been looking into ways we can help too.
And just for the, the school lunch program, I don't know that I understand the current state of it. I know at one point in time, prior to COVID, you had to sort of sign up and apply and whatnot. During COVID, you really didn't have to apply for a period of time. And I think that was, I don't really know where we stand right now if that was phased back in, that there's an application process. There is, I see, I see not. There's, there's an application process again that's required. And do we have a sense that all, I think I know the answer is that all the families that have that need don't always all apply? Is that right?
We're not allowed to know.
Yeah.
It is based, I believe, on like the level of income. So I don't know if it's an immediate need. I think it goes by like your tax return.
Right.
Last year.
Yeah.
Something we might show different than what's happening right now. It's immediate once it kicks in, though.
I mean, how much money do we, I mean, I don't know if you know this, Michelle, I mean, how much money do we get from lunch? Like, how much income do we get? So just be, how much do kids or families pay per week or per month towards food? Do we, food services, do we know? Or how much do they pay per year and we could divide it? Do we, do we have that, a number that would be in one of our budgets? Yeah.
It's a total, Jean Pierce told me we make money, they make money. But I don't know anything more than that.
Yeah.
Were you thinking perhaps, Patrick, the, you know, can we consider no longer charging for meals?
Well, that's, I mean, there's, I mean, it's funny because I brought this up years ago as something that some school districts in the western part of our state have done that. They have such a high population of families, I think they're in there, that they just don't charge for lunches at all. They just built it into their budget. But I wonder if even on a short-term basis, you know, for a month or whatever it is, you know, and we could renew it each month, that we suspend collecting money for lunch so that it's, I mean, again, I'm just thinking aloud more than making a proposal per se, but that might be a way that it just reduces any stigma or we could make it voluntary or something. I don't know. Maybe you just don't have it at all, so someone doesn't even notice if it's voluntary or not, so that every family can come in here and not worry about whether their kids are being fed at least.
I think the only way to make that work is you just suspend it for temporary, short-term. You wouldn't want to.
But the cost impact is, maybe we could, I mean, I think we'd have the authority to potentially do that.
I mean, is this, this would be the operating cost of the food service?
Well, that's what I wonder, the $310,000 that's, that's in this sheet, that's, that's for this year and it goes up to 325 for next year. Is that the?
But that would probably be based on like average use, average usage of the school lunch program as it was probably last year. Like, not every kid gets lunch every day.
I don't know what the numbers are in terms of.
My assumption would be that.
So what's on this, this sheet is what we have to appropriate to make sure that we don't overspend necessarily what we do spend.
This is.
This is only the expense side, it's not the revenue side. So we don't always make profits. So our revenue can be less than what we project for expenses, but we just have to make sure we have enough to spend. But if you'd like, what we can do is we can find out what we, what our expenses and our revenue are. But the tough part about this is because everything is required for the cooperative to be dependent upon providing information that we then get.
Right.
From that food service director, but we can ask her to provide that for like the last month to give you an idea of what comes in in the month.
I mean, I think it's good information to have. I think there's certain, weighing two things. There's an immediate need, right? So that's going to take some time and there's a need right now, right? But I think it's good information to have because this could happen again too. And I think to know, I think to have those figures to know if we were to suspend at any point.
How many students are in the two schools? Like, say they're, say they're getting like breakfast and lunch, how many?
It's like 150, isn't it, something like that?
Between our two schools?
Well, in the.
I mean, for a month, if every student got two meals a day, it would be like $115,000 for the month.
How much, well, we don't.
Like, that's like if we were to, if they were to buy it, right? That's not necessarily the cost of the food for the student that day.
I know often at times too, we've had, I think it's around the Thanksgiving holiday or maybe where we've invited families in to, I'm just also thinking about some of those partnerships where you've had people just come, just, you know, discreetly on a Saturday, or I think if I'm remembering correctly, and grab a meal or things of that nature too. Oh, was it baskets? Oh, it's a, okay. Okay. Okay.
How are you?
Just like, this is back of the napkin. So like, say $5 a day per child times 750 students.
Is that how much lunch costs?
That's if you get breakfast and lunch around.
$3.03 for lunch.
And then?
So maybe, I thought it was two. Then say 20 school days a month, because I did 30 before.
It'd be $70,000.
For, to cover like this month until we can get some idea of.
Another thing that might be helpful is just to think about the policy. There is a meal charging policy, which states clearly that no student will be denied a meal. And so it, perhaps there will be a cost in a month and the board might consider how that, that cost is paid. But that is, it is a practice that we don't deny any student a meal.
There is a stick, like sometimes there's a little stigma around like, oh, you're going to get a.
Oh, it's a certain meal that you get if you can't pay? Oh, I see. Right.
So you guys at lunch, or this might be a stupid question, but surveying to see who is and is not eating something, like if they didn't come with anything to school? Yeah, not you personally, the staff. I feel like too, if without like a, without a known, like we are suspending for the month, if families don't know that it will or won't be expunged as a cost next month, it might be a barrier to them taking it. So I feel like maybe an action is, is important to say, until we figure this out, here's what we're doing.
I mean, I could, I know we don't know the exact cost, but I could, I could see as a possibility of just, of not, you know, we'd have to announce it. But, you know, but given the, the, you know, in response to the government shutdown and suspension of, of benefits that we're suspending charging for meals at school until, you know, until the next school board meeting. You know, something like that.
It just feels like the right thing to do from my perspective. And I know the community needs it and I think it also would help remove the stigma of.
Right.
Of folks who truly need it, but don't want to raise their hand. Where everyone has access, we make it much more equitable.
I mean, right now, we have about it's almost a $600,000 anticipated unassigned fund balance.
Right.
So if it costs $100,000, then we'd have a $500,000 fund balance. I mean, that's essentially what would happen. Am I right about that, Michelle, when I say it that way? Yeah. I mean, I don't know that it'd be $100,000.
I mean, very, very official number is every student gets every meal every day, which I don't think will happen.
Unlikely.
Right.
Probably be less than, two-thirds of that, which probably would be like 40 or 50,000.
Right.
or $50,000, yeah.
Is there any way to open up to community members that actually want to give? So, knowledge about what partnerships or good places to give to support the community as well? Because I think people are looking for that, and where is the best place for them to put their resources without being, I mean, sometimes I want to go volunteer and I think I'm not that much help, you know? So, finding the best place to, to be helpful in those situations.
I think, I know we want to come back to this idea of the school lunches, but to build on, I think it's like both, right? I know that just in monitoring the Exeter Forum, there's obviously a lot of people organizing to, to, you know, keep the community fridge, but I've seen even comments there, like, I don't have transportation to get to the community fridge, right? So, just like how, yes, where are the opportunities to give, but also if you're, if you are in a situation where you are food insecure or need other resources? I think, didn't Dr. Andruski send out the Community Resources email? So, I think it sounds like, you know, that's out there, too, but I, I guess continuing to, to remind people of that, and if people ask us, too, that, that, that came out through the, I think that went out to the whole SAU 16, right?
Last Friday, I believe.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Are we still involved with End 68 Hours of Hunger? Is that, it's still an active program?
Yeah.
That's, that's--
Yeah.
So, I thought, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I, I would still, look, I, I would propose or make a motion to, that we suspend charging for meals until, you know, effective tomorrow. I mean, I know it's going to take a little time to, to announce it. I understand that announcement's not going to go out tonight, but effective immediately until the next school board meeting. I mean, that's one of the things that we would do. And, you know, I understand there's going to be a lag in terms of communicating it to families, but hopefully we can get out some notice as quickly as possible. And it's in response to the government shutdown and, and suspension of, of benefits.
I would second that. Is there any discussion?
No, this is great. Thank you for bringing this up, Patrick.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.
I, I think if we can, if, if we're able to, because I really liked what Kate had to say, too.
Yeah.
I mean, I think if there's a way that we, when we send out an announcement about it, that if, you know, you can communicate what the school board decided, but then also, as Kate was pointing out, you know, remind people about ways to give to the community more broadly, and then even remind them about the, you know, programs we have, like End 68 Hours of Hunger, if there are other programs that we have.
Just to be fair to you all, I think if we want to get the message out quickly, probably the first thing to do, maybe to send out the announce, announcement and the, maybe the, re-circulate the information that Dr. Andruski sent, which are probably also great places to maybe research and contact about giving, too, as a start, so that could maybe be a line in the communication. But then, I, I really like your point, Kate, if, if there are particular organizations that you know really need volunteers or that you're aware of, I think that that's really helpful information for folks to, who want to give back to the community. Great. Thanks, Patrick, for raising that up. Any other new business? All right, any old business? All right. Hearing none. We do need to go into non-public.
I need to close public comment.
And I need to close public comment. So, we are going to close public comment at 7:14.
This is RSA.
Okay. And we are going into non-public per RSA 91A 3 to C. Okay, and so, we need to do roll call?
Motion.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to go into non-public.
Second.
Okay, we'll do roll call. Aye?
Aye.
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 All right, and it is 7:14. Okay, we are coming out of non-public at 7:27. And I would like to make a motion to approve the recommendation of the Assistant Superintendent.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
And I would like to make, make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.